Hello and welcome, everybody, to the December 9th, 2024 joint meeting between Planning Board and the City, North Hampton City Council Legislative Matters Committee. We have the only, a portion of the meeting is, well, actually, the whole meeting is joint, right? Do you have an agenda?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So, the only thing, the first portion of the meeting will be joint, which is a discussion and vote or hearing on proposed zoning legislation. And after that hearing, in which we will, each body will make its recommendation back to the full council, the Legislative Matters Committee will adjourn and leave the Planning Board to the rest of its business. So this meeting is recorded. So with that, if we'll call it to order and we'll do a roll call.
Sure. Councillor Elkins.
Here.
Councillor Perry.
Here.
Councillor Jarrett.
Yeah.
And Councillor Mayori.
Here.
And I was hoping someone else would call Planning Board, because I think I'm missing at least one name on my roster.
You don't traditionally.
Thank you, gentlemen. Traditionally do a roll call, but for this special joint meeting, we'll do that. What are we called? Planning Board member Rich Baker. Planning Board member Chris Tate.
Here.
And Stacy Deckard.
Here.
And Jenna White.
Here.
And Melissa.
Here.
Here.
Fowler, thank you. And we have one absent at this point, and George Kohout here.
Very good. We have forms for both bodies. So I'll just reiterate again that this meeting is being recorded. We also have for approval, before we get to the hearing, approval of the minutes of the October 24th, 2024 Joint Planning Board and Legislative Matter meetings. If folks have had a chance to review that, if I could have a motion to approve. To approve?
Second.
Planning Board need to do its own motion.
We have, in these minutes, I'm not sure.
And I didn't circulate those to the Planning Board, and I don't believe they're the official record of their proceedings, since Carolyn, I think, takes those separately.
Okay.
They're welcome to accept them.
Does any, anybody on Legislative Matters have any objection to proceed with the vote? Okay, we are not all here, so we have to do a roll call.
Okay. Councillor Elkins.
Yes.
Councillor Perry.
Yes.
Councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
And Councillor Mayori.
Yes. Very good. And so next on the agenda is a public hearing on, so Planning Board with City Council Legislative Matters Subcommittee in City Council chambers, we have a hearing for proposed zoning amendments to multiple residential districts to remove site plan review process for the creation of a second unit.
Melissa, do you do public comment?
It's not on the agenda. I don't, I don't, we normally do, but it's not on the agenda. So I feel like.
Okay.
Should I do it, or wait? I don't know that there's an.
Is it on your agenda?
No, it's just kind of a traditional, it's okay.
I left it off, just assuming the only item on your agenda was the public hearing, so thinking that all comments might be related to it, but.
Well, how about this? Before we get started on the, is anybody here to speak about, have a desire to speak to us about anything that's, that's not on our agenda? And I don't see any affirmative online, so.
Thank you.
So in, with a hearing like this, for anybody who's unfamiliar, when we have a hearing like this on the agenda, we ask that comments about the agenda item be expressed in the hearing. So to the extent you might have, if you're here to share anything about that, you're still going to have an opportunity to speak, and I don't see anybody else online or in the room who seems itching to, to just talk about something else. So with that said, okay, so we have Sarah LaValley here today. Director Mish is not able to be with us today, but she sent a very capable Sarah LaValley in her stead to talk about this legislation.
Yeah, so I'll just give a brief summary, and I know the Planning Board had a lot of input that they wanted to provide as well, but essentially, this is intended to remove the requirement for site plan review for second unit. The Planning Board had found that, I don't think they had ever denied a site plan, and there are also zoning, other zoning requirements in place that required applicants and projects to meet certain standards. So in order to ease the burden of permitting for residents, it seemed like it made sense to create this change to allow some additional housing to be created.
I think I'd like to proceed as, do a quick round of questions for Sarah from us, and then we'll hear from anybody present who wants to speak for or against. Is there anybody, any of us who have any questions? George.
Hey, so often, these amendments come down, just a language clarification around language to make sure that even I kind of understand what's going on. So in the first paragraph, the first bullet, it talks about half-scale units, and that's probably defined somewhere else in the zoning regulations, but we understand that to be less than 800 square feet is a half-scale unit?
Is that, is that a question or a comment?
Well, that's a question comment. Am I correct in assuming that that means less than 800 square feet?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. I have another question, if I may, just around, in the second paragraph, approval required for the, site plan approval required down at the third bullet, the addition of a principal structure to a parcel where one already exists. So then there would be, if a new one is built, there would be two principal structures. Is that kind of redundant or confusing? What's a principal structure?
So a principal structure would be the, the main principal use of a lot. So the clarification here is when this will result in, in more than two units that will still require site plan approval.
Two units, including the principal structure? Like the original principal structure?
Either one. So if, if a principal structure is being added to the lot and it's, and that's resulting in more than two units, so two units wouldn't need site plan approval, but more than two units would then require site plan.
I'm, I'm sorry, and maybe I'm the only one, I'm just trying to understand this principal structure. So then, it really says that there would be two principal structures on the lot, once the other one is built. Which I guess is not problematic, it's.
So in, so in that case, if you had, if you had a lot where there was a, maybe a smaller single family.
Uh huh.
And you were adding a two-unit, that would then become the principal structure if it were larger. And if that resulted in more than two units, that would still require site plan review.
Okay, thank you.
So is the idea about it being a principal structure, or is it more focused on the more than two units? I had to read that bullet several times and also struggled to understand it, so I just wonder if there's a way to clarify it.
Yeah, so the addition of the principal structure is the existing zoning, so the change here is clarifying that when it's resulting in more than two units.
So it was already confusing.
Before we started.
Yes. That's what I took away as well.
I, I wonder why, it just doesn't say the addition of a, a structure to a parcel where one already exists, the addition of a residential structure to a parcel where one already exists.
I mean, doesn't it already require site plan approval if it's more than two? Like regardless of whether or not it's principal or not principal? It seems like maybe the whole sentence is redundant?
Yeah, I mean, it's working with the existing zoning, so I, I think as Jenna mentioned, it is a little confusing as it is, but if someone were creating a larger structure, this is clarifying what needs site plan review and what does not.
Yeah, I guess I'm just saying, if it's creating a larger structure, that then means there's three or more that require site plan anyway.
It would, but if someone had just one structure on a lot and were adding a larger house, that was a separate building, that wouldn't require site plan review unless it was resulting in three units or more.
Three units.
But isn't that already covered in the bullet and the uses allowed by right, to single-family dwellings, principal or otherwise? Like, I don't understand what this bullet gives us that we don't already get above and elsewhere in the zoning. I mean, I suppose it's fine to be there, except that it's confusing, so.
I think we could, maybe what we'll do is, for now, we can make a note of it, and it's possible that that might be, I could see it being appropriate to excise entirely when it comes.
Certain districts, like URB, URC, three families are allowed by right, but not if they're detached. And I think this is what, is that perhaps what that's trying to, to be clear. So say you already had a two-family, and you wanted to add a, a third unit, you can do that by right if it's attached. If it's detached, you can't, even with this change.
But is it the detached, or is it the making it of a principal, which is to say bigger, structure that triggers?
I don't think a principal structure is, if larger or smaller, it's just a principal use. So if it's a residential use, and that's the.
Oh, the principal, okay.
So let's, let's consider a scenario where you have. Yeah. You have a three-family, I mean, you have a two-family and you're adding one. And would that be? That, that would, unless you specify that a, it has a second structure, triggers site plan, it might fall under uses allowed by right.
So I'm sorry, if I have a two-family and I add another unit to it, now I'm going to have attached or detached, I'm going to have now three units, right? And, and when this will result in more than two units, I still have to come for site plan, regardless of whether it's principal or not.
Yeah, well, not if it was attached. If it was attached, it could be by right.
Depending on the zone.
So, so the, the language about the principal structure is, is saying, is there another detached structure that will result in more than two units? And if so, you want to go through site plan, because the form-based code only applies to two. So we don't have a form-based code for three, so it's appropriate in that case for the Planning Board to review it. Am I right, Sarah? And this is the, the thinking behind the language?
Yeah, I think that's a, that's accurate.
Could we perhaps change principal structure to detached structure?
And then we, I mean, if we did that, we'd get rid of the addition.
Well, no, because you can have two detached, single-family dwellings by right.
It's not a principal structure to a parcel. I like Marissa's suggestion of noting this, the addition of a principal structure to a parcel where a structure already exists, where a unit already exists.
Yeah, there may be a, a technical reason why there's this particular reference to a principal structure here, but I have to admit, I don't know what that is. So it, it might make sense to note that and, and see if that's something that could be tightened up a little bit.
Okay.
Okay. Sometimes what we accomplish is, it makes us all scratch our head and, and that we need to, you know, finalize before we, so that's been duly noted. Does anybody else? And I'll come back to, to us, but if, if everybody feels like at least their initial round of questions, if they're satisfied, so I would.
I do have a question.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I just want to make sure I am clear on the context here. So my recollection of when the zoning was put into place that allowed two-family throughout the city by site plan, part of the reason why that happened was because we wanted to see basically not new gas hookups and people using energy-efficient systems, and we couldn't put that in zoning, that was part of the building code, and so we put it under site plan, so that that could become a requirement for site plan approval. So, and I think that that changed at the state level, and that's part of what's driving this change. Can you just give some context on that?
Sure. So a, a number of things have happened since the zoning was initially put in place to address that. The city adopted an additional level of building stretch code, so, so that now applies, so that it's not necessary to have it in the, the site plan trigger in the zoning anymore. Also, the, the gas moratorium has, has effectively changed that for new uses, and the city has recently become part of an energy pilot program, which also works to address that in the same manner.
So we no longer need the zoning to, site plan to review to cover that, because it's covered multiply.
Correct.
In other areas. Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
It was just, you're Mike Rich.
Thank you. Thank you. And bearing in mind that I'm new, so I'm still learning a bunch of stuff. And we have talked about form-based criteria, so that I could get, kind of get up to speed on it. It was adopted, how long ago?
Two years.
Two years, the form-based code, the new, two years?
Not very long ago. Okay, but my, to get to my question, so how well is it designed to deal with tiny units and the kind of things that this is going to open up the, the, the gates for? And to what degree might there need to be adjustments to 35611, now that we're bringing in this whole other kind of housing?
And I don't think the zoning would necessarily need to be changed as a result of anything that's being shifted here. You know, if people are looking at the form-based code and deciding that maybe there's some additional design criteria that, that should be included, that might be a separate discussion. But the form-based codes that, that's in place would work to ensure that the, you know, any, any new uses have the, the look and feel that, that was desired when that was put in place.
Thank you. One last question, if I might. So we use, up in the top paragraph, we use this figure of the SIFT review of all second units less than 2,000 square feet to building permit review, but then on the, the next, all the way down through that, then we start using 1,800 square feet, 1,800 square feet, until the very last bullet, when we go back to greater than 2,000 square feet. So I, I, would it be easier if we were consistent and used 1,800 square feet? I don't know where this 200 square feet causes a, a issue, either always use 2,000 or always use 1,800, or maybe the counselors, the writers of this saw something explicit in.
We didn't write this, but I believe maybe Rachel and I were responsible for that 1,800 square feet. So it only applies in outlying districts. It doesn't actually apply in the URB, URC district, but it actually requires a, a special permit if you're going to, if your second unit is greater than 1,800 square feet and for detached. And that's, I don't know if that's mentioned in here, because it's not changing, but that, that's why that trigger in those outlying districts is, is at 18, or that restriction is at 1,800.
Rather than the 2,000, not to exceed 2,000 square feet.
Well, and, but that's only site plan. There's actually, it's actually special permit criteria when you're built, if you're, the concern at the time was that we would see a lot of very large houses being built, multiples of them on, on the same lot.
Right.
I'm not sure if we've seen that, but that was the concern, and, and we addressed that by making it a special permit criteria if one of your units exceeds 1,800 square feet. In, only in, I think it's suburban residential, rural residential, and water supply protection.
It looks like 1,800 is used for URA also, though.
That might be, URA might also be one of those districts. See where that, it's URA district, yeah.
So in URB and URC, you wanted to give the applicant 200 more square feet of building, because we want to provide more intensive, or more chances for housing there, 200 more square feet of housing.
Not only that, but also, you know, it's only site plan that's triggered.
Yeah.
At 2,000. There's, I think, less of a concern because of the tighter spaces you see in, in URB and URC.
Okay.
Very good. All right, so, so now I will bounce to the public, and I think what I'd like to do is, and I, there aren't a lot of folks here or online, but if, can hear first for people from, if there's anybody here who would like to speak in favor of the legislation, or have any, also, please, if you have any questions, we would take down questions. So neutral's an option as well, if you, or if you just have some questions or concern to raise, but let's start with in favor and questions generally right now.
And do we, have we opened the public hearing?
Oh, my goodness. What were you talking about? I forget.
Doesn't do it, which is why probably.
Okay, so hang tight. So with that, I would, can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
A second. And we can have a roll call, please.
Sure. Councillor Perry.
You might not be able to unmute, because, hold on, hold on. That's my security.
Yes.
Councillor Mayori.
Yes.
Councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
And Councillor Elkins.
Yes. So if we have a hearing, but nobody opens it, does it, does it?
Make a sound.
All right. So now, you look ready to, to come, please. And when you, please just state your name and, and where you live before you speak.
Hi, I'm Alex Bowman. I live in a mixed-use, five-family building of 10 people in about 60 feet of frontage on Market Street. I too, want to make it easy to build good housing, but I also want it to be sustainable housing that adds to our community. Think 15 Minute City or 15 Minute Village. While I understand this proposed zoning change only relaxes a site plan requirement, we must carefully consider the broader implications of encouraging certain housing in suburban and rural areas. Continuing to promote low-density, car-dependent housing is unsustainable. Without nearby businesses to provide any services or support, taxes on residential buildings are often unable to support their infrastructure costs. Maintenance requirements increase with these new buildings, maintenance requirements increase for roads and bridges because of increased use. Have you seen how much it costs to maintain and upgrade water and sewer system to service low-density areas? This type of development also strains emergency response times and contributes to greater traffic congestion, which affects us all. Do we really want to invest in unviable and disconnected living? We are already facing significant challenges maintaining our current infrastructure. Incremental expansion at the edges exacerbates these struggles, making it harder to address other needs. Though we are in a housing crisis, we need to be care, we need careful strategies that prioritize sustainable and financially viable development. I don't have a great answer on how to make housing more affordable, but please, let's make every effort to promote sustainable development and promote infill that does not add significant infrastructure burden. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the room or online who wishes to speak? I think that was mostly in favor. To speak in favor or have any questions? All right. I'm not seeing anybody online, and nobody's coming forward in the, in, in the room. So, so I will bounce back for more questions, and we can have some discussion while, especially while we have Sarah here, before we close public hearing. But, so I'll do that, let's, we can have a little discussion if we want before we then close it, and then it's, it's just us, us just us talking. Does anybody have any sort of last rounds of thoughts or questions while, while we have Sarah here?
I'll point out, I think this is just a minor duplication, but in water supply, in the water supply protection, the language, any new construction other than for a single home greater than 2,000 square feet, it's already in the site plan section that it currently exists, but it's indicated as being added. So I, I think that can be entirely struck. This is, yeah, the very last, very last sentence of, of the proposal, that's indicated as being added, but it, or it should either be struck or made to be not read.
Do you have a thought or proposal as to which?
I don't know, Sarah, if you have thought of whether that was intentional to provide context or just copied in by mistake?
Yeah, that looks like it just was an error, because it's, it's eliminated from the first bullet and then repeated at the bottom.
So I propose that we strike it.
Okay.
And then unstrike the first bullet?
Actually, I think it, I think it's, it.
Oh, yeah.
It used to say feet squared with a small number, and this is spelling it out. So it says greater than 2,000 square feet.
Position as well, not just, okay, that makes sense, that's logical. So strike that suggestion.
Never mind. It is, it's the same but different. Alex, I appreciate your detail line so much.
I'd also speak to Alex Bowman's comment, because it's something I think we've been thinking about throughout the process of two-family by right throughout the city, and, and then also now, you know, relaxing some of the, the, for the process. And the question is, do the, does the fact that there's already a road there, in fact, there's already a service line, you know, to the house, so there's already water and sewer, there's, you're maintaining the same stretch of water and sewer, the same stretch of road, is that better to ha, is it better to have more houses, which essentially pay into paying for those roads and those water and sewer lines? Is that enough to make up for the, the general loss of tax revenue in suburban and rural areas where, you know, I'm, I'm that, I don't know if you're familiar with the firm Urban3, but they, they make maps of cities that show. I don't know if you're familiar with the, um, firm Urban Three, but they, they make maps of cities that show tax revenue, um, and rela- in relative to, um, the areas of the city. And you see that, you know, it's the downtown areas that really bring in tremendous amounts of tax revenue. And then they also show how much is spent in particular areas of the city. And so, and a lot less is actually spent in, in downtown areas compared to the amount of tax revenue that's being brought in versus in suburban and, and rural areas, you're spending a lot more, uh, than you are bringing in tax revenue. And so, um, you know, we don't, we obviously want to support existing residents, but as we're thinking about where to build, we want to make sure that we're building in a way that doesn't deplete our revenues further. Um, so th- this, and that, that's a reason to, to not allow new subdivisions, for example. Or if you do have a subdivision, you want to make sure that's a private road and you, you'd never, you put in, and I know you've addressed this in the past, you put in a caveat or a restriction that says that, you know, you may not ever make this a non-private road. And that's part of that, that thinking, uh, I think. So I think what Alex Bowman was bringing up is, is just adding additional houses that, that will create more trips, um, to this area and, and, you know, that'll, um, create more wear and tear on a road. How does that compare to the, the tax revenue, the housing needs? Um, because sometimes it, it can be cheaper to build in an area um, where you have more space to, to build. Um, there's just so many different factors. And I appreciate that he brought that up because I think it's a good thing to have a discussion about. You know, we settled on that because you're building along existing roads with existing service, that we said, we said, yes, let's, let's go ahead and do that. Um, and let's allow that. And so this change is, is pretty minor, removing a, a um, regulatory restriction. So I, I would come down on, I'm in favor of this change and it seems to me to make sense to, to, um, support building along existing roads and with existing connections.
Yeah. And I think, and I thank you, Mr. Bowman, for raising, for raising that point. I, I agree with the compromise that we made. It was, it was a kind of a, you know, a weighing of all, of all these balances. The other thing is, is it seems to me that, um, construction costs going up. It, so the dilemma maybe is, is the, the difference between adding a second unit right to an existing structure versus building new and making that a two family. I mean, the struggle, of course, is that we can do single family by right wherever. And if they have money to do it, they can do it. The only, we're, I still think we're probably better off adding two homes where, where just one could be, um, and also the, the, the gas moratorium and the, um, and just the cost of construction. If somebody's building on a parcel that doesn't have the existing infrastructure and they have to build out their own driveway and they have to build out their, you know, the, i- in that situation, you have to contribute more to get the infrastructure to the front door. So I don't, I don't know. It's a perfect, uh, solution, um, but it is, it, it hopefully incentivizes better or, uh, to, you know, the choices we hope builders might, might make. But, um, in the end, I, I, hopefully this will, it, it's the infill development. It's the closer in that we hope to see. And removing barriers, I think, seems important.
I might add too, that this isn't, this change isn't shifting anything from a discretionary permit to something being allowed by right. Site plan is already allowed by right as long as the development meets those criteria. And those have been addressed elsewhere in the zoning. So this is just eliminating a, a review, um, and an expense and, um, you know, something that takes a lot of time and, and cost for applicants and time for the board as well.
Right, exactly. And it's most daunting, I think, for the, you know, developers and builders are, are used to this process and, and navigate it. It becomes harder for people who want to use their own property in different ways. Um, so it becomes a bear.
And along, along those lines, um, we're reducing the, the burden on the applicant. But by, by the applicant having to come off into the planning board and submitting their plans to review by the planning staff, they went through the criteria of the zoning to make sure that everything was being met. The planning board did too. Our experience is that we very rarely did any kind of changes to someone's plans. But I wondered now, is it going to be a burden on the building department? Have we, now that the building department, the building inspector will need to go through all of that criteria around the form-based code and the plans? And are, are they prepared for that? Is that a, an issue at all?
So the, the building permit process always begins with a zoning permit application to identify what might be necessary. Uh, so as part of that process, we'll take extra care to flag, like here are the, you know, the form-based code provisions that you need to comply with. Um, and we could address it at the staff level, which typically we're doing with a more complicated project anyway. We're, and we're always talking to applicants and working them through the, the zoning if there's complicated issues that arise.
So the planning staff will still take the first bite at it rather than having it dropped over at the building inspector's office.
Correct. Yeah. And we were, we were collaboratively, collaboratively with them and we'll continue to do that.
Thanks.
All right. Um, so I'm going to make one more pass. Is there anybody in the audience Zoom or in person that, uh, wishes to speak to this, either in favor or against or anyway whatsoever? Okay. Does anybody have any last questions for Sarah while we're here? Okay.
I have a logistical question. If we were, uh, uh, moving toward a positive recommendation, but recognizing one line of this is confusing, how might we incorporate that into a recommendation?
Uh, I would defer that to Carolyn probably to look at to, um, determine whether that's something that really needs to be in there and to change the language. Um, I, typically there are some changes that arise as part of this process. How is that usually?
Yeah. I mean, I think, um, I mean, planning board, you guys can do, you can do whatever you want. But, um, I, I would imagine that we might, we, whatever recommendation that we, assuming it's a po- a, a positive recommendation, let's assume for the moment. Um, that we might just put in some language like, you know, subject clarification of that, that, that one provision that we raised a question about, or, um, we're, we are still able to amend things on, on the floor when it comes to a vote for us. So you can put whatever language on it that you want to send to council. Um, okay. So I, do I hear, I know our formalistic council things. I have a motion to close the public hearing. Move to close the pu- public hearing?
Second.
And a roll call, Laura.
Sure. Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Mayori.
Yes.
And Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
I, I move to close the public hearing for the planning board.
My second.
All those in favor?
Good job. Um, all right. So now we can, uh, deliberate. I know we've asked some questions, made some comments, but, um, I would take a motion for the purpose of discussion, or we can have discussion first, move motion, whatever you want to do. Charles.
Uh, I just wanted to say that there's only one place here where principal structure is referenced. Everywhere else it's talking about dwellings. So maybe if we talk about the addition of a dwelling to a parcel where one already exists, might make it a little more clear in this context.
To, to Sarah's point, is there anywhere else, anywhere else in code where, where there might be a reference to principle that would be critical to tying this together?
It, it's just not mentioned for anything else in this entire section.
In this section.
In what we're looking at. So.
How about, oh, go ahead, Rachel. Oh, no. Oh, sorry. Alex.
Dwelling, principal structure is different than a dwelling because a dwelling can be, there can be multiple dwellings in one structure. So we'd need to make that distinction.
Then I'd worry about some of these other areas, maybe where that distinction isn't made.
Um, I, I think, I mean, at least, um, I'm a little reluctant to sort of mess around with that language, that principle language, just because I'm sitting here right now, not sure where, what else it cross references in the, in the zoning code. Um, so I, I mean, I'm content to sort of put a pen in it and revisit it before we pass it to make sure it, we're happy with where it lands in terms of clarifying.
I'm okay leaving it for, to be clarified too. I'm looking at the dwelling too. And every other one that mentions dwelling, it says either two single family dwellings or it, it specifies what type of dwelling it is.
Sure. A two family or two single family dwellings, but it could also say two single family principal structures. Right? Like it's.
Unless principal structure is specific to something outside of this. That we don't know.
Yeah. I would just say it'd be, I would positively recommend this personally either way. So for, for me, the motion would be move to, uh, recommend, um, with, you know, move to it, not, we're not really approving. I don't know if you guys are approving, recommending, recommend.
I would approve any.
With the added recommendation that that language be clarification, but not make it subject. Because for me personally, I, I'm going to support it, but I, we can recommend that that language be clarified.
Is that, so is that a motion to positively recommend?
Yeah, so. Right.
Subject to, you didn't want to subject.
No, I don't. Right. That's what I was saying. It's like, so move for, uh, for a positive recommendation, um, with the recommendation to cl- um, clarify the language, um.
Related to the.
Yeah, the following language related to the, your principle.
And paragraph.
Principle. Yep.
I had seconded that with all of that you said.
Laura, did you get that? Have you, have you, are you crystal clear on what we're, we're doing?
Yes. Was that seconded by a planning board member though? I, I didn't recognize the word. Oh, I'm Garrick.
From above.
Okay. All right. So I think we have a motion for positive recommendation with a lot of verbiage.
Yes, yes.
And seconded, uh, by, uh, Garrick. Um, do we want to do separate motions or do?
We want to do their own motion.
I think we do our own motion.
No, I know you do. I just wondered if you wanted to do it now or if you wanted to pass.
Why don't you have your vote?
Yeah. Okay. Um, so any discussion on the motion? All right. So hearing now, we have a roll call, please.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Mayori.
Yes.
Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
And Counselor Perry.
Yes. Good. So now it's the planning board's turn, if I understand correctly. Before we get there, I have one more quick question. I, I don't think, because the public hearing is closed, we can still ask staff this. But Sarah, up in the top paragraph again, I, um, no, the first bullet, I asked about the definition of a half scale unit. So is that referenced somewhere else in the zoning code, what a half scale unit is? Or could we?
You're putting me on the spot to tell you.
No, okay.
It definitely is.
It, it is. Okay.
Dwelling half scale, a unit that is no larger than eight hundred square feet of gross living area.
Okay.
In the table of uses where allowed and for the purposes of calculating total allowable density, two half scale units shall be treated as one dwelling unit.
Okay. Thank you.
Does that mean that you can have four in, um, in this, in this scenario without, but oh, half scale, the half scale units always triggers site plan? No.
No.
This.
No.
So does that mean you can have four without site plan?
Well, doesn't the first bullet point uses loud by right, say that you could have twelve or fewer half scale units without site plan?
Um, I have, sorry, in two separate buildings.
Single two, two, four, six or fewer unit. Think of how efficient the sewer is then. You're getting four times your use out of the sewer.
I guess, no, because, well, right, is this, the, the whole thing we just talked about, the addition of a principal structure where one already exists, when this will result in two, two units, but half scale units are defined as half a unit. So it would seem to me that you could.
Yeah. Yep.
Well, and that's not a change that's already in there. So if it's not clear, it's,
Yep.
Hasn't been clear for a while. I think some developer making a, a, a bunch of, uh, half scale units would be a good problem to have and to be sorted out later, but that's just me.
We're going to hear about this later tonight.
It's true.
Half scale unit, so.
Yep.
Yep. All right, um.
Well, I, I would move to positively recommend with no conditions, because they already conditioned looking at it anyway. So I don't feel like we need to double up on that.
Motion been made to recommend the, uh, the amendment for multiple sections of the zoning ordinance. Is there a second? Second. Motion made by Chris Tate, seconded by Rich Baker. Any discussing? All those in favor? Woo hoo. Well done, team.
Um, I wanted to thank you, Sarah. I imagine you're staying on because you're, you're Carolyn tonight, so there's more for you. But thank you. Uh, you did an excellent job. I don't know why the zoning, uh, joint meetings make me nervous. I don't know why they, uh, so, um, very good. Um, so where, do you, can I have a motion to adjourn? The, the move to adjourn.
Second.
Have a roll call, Laura.
Counselor Mayori.
Yes.
Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
And Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
All right. And legislative committee bounces, y'all.
Thank you. And the planning board will take just a few minutes before we come back to order, um, to finish up the planning board agenda for the evening.
If I were Carolyn, I'd be like, if you're going to make ineligent recommendations, then don't expect. My recommending for.
Yeah, no, for sure.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thanks for your patience. Our, our, uh, joint meeting ran a little bit over, um, but it was good work. Um, but here we are, um, the planning board meeting of December ninth, two thousand and twenty-four here at City Council Chambers and also online. So we'll just take a minute before we get into our agenda. There's just a few agenda items. Um, is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a public comment about items in the city that are not on the agenda tonight? All right. And I don't see anybody who has a hand raised out in, uh, um, the Zoom world. So we'll get right into our first thing advertised for seven P M. It's a request by David Jagodzinski for a special permit for second curb cut and site plan review for a second residential unit at five twenty-four Park Hill Road, Florence map by D fifty dash two. We have a note from staff that the applicant's not quite ready to, for his presentation, his plans. And there's a request to continue it to January ninth at seven P M. January ninth, two thousand twenty-five. Is, is the applicant here? So is there a motion to continue to January ninth at seven P M?
So moved.
Second by Stacy. Okay. Second by Stacy. Okay. Um, any discussion? All right. All those in favor continuing the hearing? Sweet. All right.
Exciting stuff.
Exciting stuff. So now we have four.
Do today, anything you can wait for January 9th to do?
Next year.
We have four items ahead of us, a, a name change for the Cardinal Way Homeowners Association, an A and R, and the minutes of 11:14, and the one item related to 79 King Street. So if it's okay, we'll go right to that item. There's a request for an administrative amendment for 79 King Street to modify unit size, which allows us, allows the applicant to create more units. And there are no related building or site changes. Um, Sarah, do you want to give us some background or?
Sure. So this is, um, staff is recommending this basically just as an administrative change. Because there, there are no changes being proposed to the building design, footprint, height or location, but just a reconfiguration of the 88 units within to make them smaller and then allow um, the applicant to achieve 120 units within the building. Uh, the original project was a site plan review. At that point, it did require central business architecture review. And that's all about the site and access and the building design, and none of that is changing. Uh, in the zoning district, there isn't a minimum lot size requirement for the purposes of determining the total allowed units on a parcel. And unlike the, the zoning changes that were being reviewed, um, to talk about what's shifting from site plan to by right, this is within the central business district. So this allows the greatest density for any residential uses. So the number of units allowed is not subject to the planning board approval. Um, there, there isn't any minimum parking required for this use, but 65 spaces will continue to be available. So they're basically just seeking a reduction of the, the unit size to 800 square foot, square foot units. And that's the same size for which the zoning gives a bonus in the URB and, and URC districts. And additional changes is that, um, it had been, this wasn't part of the planning board review, but there was discussion that uh, that this would be focused on 55 plus, but now it's going to be targeted to all age groups. But that's, that's not a zoning change and not a planning board item for consideration. Uh, and I, I know that the applicant is here if the board has any questions as well.
Sure. Perhaps the applicant would like to make a statement?
Make sure the light's green on the.
Is it green?
Can you hear me better now?
We can't hear, we won't be able to hear you, but is this light green?
It is, it is green.
Okay.
Okay, great. Thanks. So my name's Jeff Spiratos, represent 79 King Street LLC. We are grateful for, uh, the zoning approval that we received almost a year ago. Or just about a year ago, and given the considerations of the market, construction costs, interest rates, uh, opportunity to right-size, uh, our development. Uh, Sarah stated exactly what we're looking for. We would appreciate the flexibility that allows us to increase the number of units, the confirmation that there's no use restriction. We also want to be open to the possibility of creating mixed income housing. Because there's opportunities for what's important to North Hampton, uh, across all income levels and also the opportunity to take advantage of different capital sources, uh, incentives that support the creation of workforce housing and more affordable housing. So I don't know if I've left anything out, but our request is, as Sarah stated. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board? Carolyn had sent us kind of a memo email with all of those points that were pretty clear. Um, and the rest are now for making this kind of an administrative amendment.
Just out of curiosity, what does it mean to get a, this, the, this is the same size for which the zoning gives a bonus in URB and URC? What does that mean?
I, I think Carolyn had just been pointing out that, um, th- this is sort of a, a target size in, in other zoning districts.
Okay.
This will definitely be the largest residential complex in downtown North Hampton. Other than maybe the quad up at Smith Campus, 120 units. It'll be interesting to see how that how it pans out. It's a wonderful thing, but I think it's gonna really be a, a change from down there, something that many of us are looking forward to. And, and interesting about the parking, again, there doesn't, there's no minimum parking, so they'll stay at the 65 spaces. Hopefully everyone will have a bicycle. Any other questions or comments for the applicant? All right. So I guess we're making a recommendation to, um, approve to the administrative amendment for this modification.
I'm just, I'm not clear on the language. Yeah.
I, I.
We're confirming that it could be a staff review, administrative amendment?
Yes, yes.
We're, we're approving the request for administrative amendment by the applicant to create more units and with no building or site changes.
Okay. I, I move to handle this via administrative approval.
My second.
Discussing. So I guess when we see regular amendments, they come in with plans that lay out all of the specs and, and note the changes in whatever it might be landscaping or elevations. But there's no plans related to these changes. So that's why it's administrative. All right. Okay. So the motion's been made and seconded. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Good luck with your capital search.
Thank you all very much. It's great to see you all again. Appreciate it.
Looking forward to it. Yep.
Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Want to move to the Cardinal Way Homeowners Association? There's, and, and I don't know if this is again, an administrative, they have to come to the planning board. I'll, I'll throw it over to Sarah's.
So the, the original covenants required planning board approval of a host of changes, including the name, so that this requires planning board approval to, to change the name.
Correct. Now, I'm, uh, one of the managers. Uh, my name's Robert Salucci, my manager for the association. So, this was brought about years ago. It never gained any traction and now it has. And, uh, I'm just bringing it to the board to formalize the change so that, uh, it was the plantation at West Farms, which doesn't really apply to our neighborhood. And, uh, we just want to change it to the Cardinal Way HOA. So it's pretty simple.
Yep. I, I, I think I was on the board at that time when the development, the subdivision came in and we scratched our head about that. But the developer was adamant that keeping it as such, you know, so glad to see you coming forward with this. This doesn't bring too well these days.
Yeah, it's not even that. It just doesn't even apply and it's on everybody's, you know, deed, this covenant that doesn't make sense for the name of our street. And, um, I just walked the street one time. I got 24 of 29 homes to sign. So the other five I just didn't make contact with. So I think it's pretty unanimous and it's, uh, it's just administrative.
Any questions from the board? So is there a, a motion to approve this name change?
I'll move that we approve the Cardinal Way HOA name change.
All right. So we'll become now the Cardinal Way Homeowners Association. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you. Yep. Have a good night.
Yep. Is there another comment from?
It's not related, so I'll add.
Okay. Okay. Our next bulleted item is our ever favorite A and R at 723 Ryan Road.
Has the board gotten a chance to look at this one?
No.
No.
So sometimes Carolyn just pulls up Google Maps for us. No, we didn't.
Well, I'd like to see the plan though.
Alrighty.
I'd like to see the actual plan as a matter of principle.
Uh, 723 Ryan Road.
Great card, Nick.
What are we doing here, Sarah?
Uh, so lot B, uh, as shown on the, the left side of the screen, um, is being separated from lot A.
How much frontage do we have on?
Uh, on Ryan Road, there's 175.51 feet of frontage requirement is 175.
That's more.
Right, Ryan Road is a street.
Say those numbers again. So in this district, we require 175 feet of frontage.
Correct.
And this lot is going to have.
175 and a half. Um, and at the, uh, the smallest measurement point, it's exactly 175 feet. So it, it does meet the frontage requirement.
I move to endorse this A and R on Ryan Road.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the endorsement? Great. Okay.
Spray paint it.
And, uh, Carolyn sent out minutes from November 14th.
I don't think, I don't think she did.
I don't think she did.
No, I don't think she did. So those will be next time.
It's that down the road to our, our January 9th meeting. Cause we're not meeting again in December. Our next meeting is January 9th. All right. Any other business come before the planning board tonight? Their motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
At 7:40, second.
My phone says it's 7:39.
Do you hold on, Lauren?
Hold that for that second.
Second.
All right. Motion for debate to adjourn, seconded, all those in favor? Thank you very much. Thanks for coming, everybody, tonight.